I can speak to that. I mean, I know what that's all about.
Oh, the, uh...
Dennis isn't coming.
Oh, okay. You want to speak with him?
Sure. So, I had sent a, an email or a request to have it put on the agenda to look at the space from, or the street, from Newton, Goodell Street, from Newton down to Crescent Street, along the tennis and basketball courts. It's dangerous, cars fly by, there's not the proper signage. So, I sent that out. Dennis's response was as follows: "There are two signs on the right-hand side of Goodell Street, just as you..." No, that's, uh, that's me.[56.78][56.78](noise) Hold on one second.
So, the chief couldn't make it tonight?
No, that's him. So, he couldn't make it because he's looking at another police station for ideas up, out in Berkshire.
Berkshire, yeah.
Sounds like I like this.
Well, I'll tell ya, it sounds like a nice trip to me.
Yeah, really.
The fall would've convinced him.
I think the rest of the committee didn't get to that.
Yeah, exactly what he wrote. "There are two signs on the right-hand side of Goodell Street, just as you would pass Newton, headed down the hill. They're partially obstructed and faded. The signs read 'Blind driveway and playground ahead.' These should be replaced and the post moved to more visible position. I believe that an additional crosswalk at the two parking areas would be a good idea if clearly posted, as well as no parking signs placed in front of the island on the opposite side of the park where the large parking area is." This will keep the crosswalk clear in, in clear view and not have people crossing between parked cars. If the board discusses these ideas and votes to have them completed, I'll work with the DPW for the proper placement of these items. He also was saying, um, he has the funds from a grant that he's just been saving for, he didn't know what. At the crosswalk, I don't know if any of you guys have seen the, the crosswalks where you press the button and, and there's, there's two signs that, that flash when somebody's walking across. So, he got it, he has a thousand dollar grant that he received from Walmart that he said could pay for that. So, I, I mean, I, I think we should move ahead with this. It is an area that is unsafe for the kids. Walking across ten, twelve-year-old kids generally, they're gonna park big, just run. I had inquired about lowering the speed limit from thirty down to possibly twenty, and he, at this point, doesn't think that's necessary. And he does have the, the rotating signs that you're gonna start seeing that says, "Hey, this is your speed." So, I, I'd like to see this happen, and I'll make a motion to, how do I wanna phrase this motion?
I could just suggest that we, we make the motion that the chief does what he thinks is best there, instead of us trying to spell it all. I just have one question. I guess I'll make that motion, that the chief does it.
I'll second that.
And he's saying that, that flashing thing's gonna cost a thousand dollars?
No, no, no. He has, he has a thousand dollar grant.
Like those stop, those flashing stoplights cost?
No, he has a thousand dollar, he has the funds from a grant that he can do this.
Do the basics, not that flashing stuff.
No, the, the, this is what he said to me. He's looking into the pricing right now. But he has a thousand dollar grant. Is it gonna cost more? Is it gonna cost less? I don't know. But he has a thousand dollars available.
I guess it would be more, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Cause the stop signs, what were those each?
Twelve hundred, thirteen hundred.
Yeah, so I can't imagine that whole system with pushing the button when lights flash.
Okay. Need a motion, second. Any discussion?
I, I just have a question. Pat, um, right now, there's just one crosswalk from the larger parking lot to Goodell Park.
And it's on the corner.
Right. So, is he gonna put it, was he saying in that, that there's gonna be, you're asking to add another one up near the tennis courts?
Good, say that.
No.
From the parking lot.
From the parking lot. Right now, nobody uses that crosswalk. Nobody's gonna turn right, walk along the Jersey barrier, cross, and then turn left. So, that crosswalk doesn't get used for people going to the park.
Okay, okay.
That crosswalk does get used for school walkers.
Right.
But it, it's, so he's gonna put another one...
Up the street.
Up the street, where that larger parking lot area is, to go across the street.
From the parking lot, too, like the concession stand area.
Correct. I don't know, that, where, where, right. Wherever he thinks is the, is the best location.
Okay.
I think the, I really don't care what we do, the people fly down that hill.
Yeah.
If we go to twenty, they're gonna still go forty. You know, I think, you know, so I think he just has to slow them down, cause someone is gonna get hit there. It's very dangerous.
And can I say that I think that is such a commuting road from Holden up to the top of Goodell, that that's a lot of the traffic that goes through there. It's not just our townspeople using it. The trucks go up and down that street. It's faster than what I would like to see it in, on some of those curves. But I think this is a good start.
Right. I was gonna say, let's do this.
So, I think it's very good. Yep.
If the speed limit needs to be adjusted, or, or more patrols, or whatever. But right now, doing nothing is an option, so.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just that, uh, Mr. Kittredge is here. I know Mr. Kittredge has done some sign replacements, uh, already.
Those two signs, those two signs you're talking about, I had to put a "Go children's slow" sign and a "Blind driveway" sign, and we cut back the brush to stop, cause I caught your email.
Okay.
So, we did that to stop, cause we had those in the shop, so we could do those that day.
Excellent. But we, but like I said, the chief needs, I'm sure he knows this, but the biggest thing is enforcement, because it's, they're still gonna drive fast with all the signs, um, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Intermittent Director of Public Works, Michael Kittredge, the third, uh, wanna come up? First one's considering accepting bids for highway material as recommended by the interim director.
Right, that's that package I gave you last time to look through. It's just, uh, goods and services. We need to make it a little easier for us to operate, so.
You wanna do these individually, or together?
Mr. Chairman, Mike, should we go by division? You've got Division Two, Division Four, and Division Five.
It's up to you, if you'd like to, however you wanna do it.
Do you have?
I gave them all. They should all have one.
Perhaps we could do these in, in numerical order. Uh, that's Division Two, and that's the product.
Okay.
In the vendor.
Okay.
And we don't, I don't...
No one else has that, right?
I don't think we have. Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, we have what's in the agenda, but we don't have.
I think Mike brought them.
Last week, wow.
Yeah, till the last.
Two weeks ago. Remember, we were here last.
Yeah, it was on our desk.
I don't have them. That's what I know.
After the phone.
So, the first one is, uh, coal planning. It's a little bit. No. Anything that's not, doesn't have numbers beside it, we didn't get bids on. This was just a small bid. This was just to make it easier for us, so we can do the Malden Street projects and other things. We have these things in place, you know, just to get us through. There was nothing. I went to look for some of these things, so that I could just pull a couple of numbers off it, and I couldn't find anything, and I couldn't find anything back another year, so we had to kinda scramble to put something together. And we just did it from, I know what the dates are, from like October to June, just to get us through this. And we'll do, you know, whoever's the next person, whatever happens, they gotta do a real bid come next June, do the whole thing. And more people bid on that. You know, most of the stuff's already, these people have already committed for the years. When they were looking at some of this stuff, I'm sure they're saying, you know, yeah. But we did have, we got what we wanted, so, you know.
And would it be helpful if Mr. Kittredge just, uh, read out what he, what he's asking for the contract award on?
Okay.
Let's do that one.
I think the next one was the concrete, like, pavement.
Oh, you did, okay. All right. Um, the bituminous concrete at plant, we have vendor two aggregate. Uh, bituminous concrete in place, we have PJ Keating, coal patch at plant. We only got the one bid, PJ Keating.
Can I just, uh, Keating, no. Their plant's way out in Lunenburg.
Yep.
You have to drive all the way out there to get a truckload of coal patch?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, hopefully with our new machine.
Good thing we got a new machine.
Machine, we're not gonna be doing it as much, so that was, uh...
That's a long ride.
It's not too bad. It was, you know, can be ready with the, with one night.
Yeah, one night, then you're gonna get on Route Two and, uh, it's a little way, a little ride, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's put it this way, if it was hot when it went in, and it was cold when it gets back.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
So, move, uh, are we doing this by sections?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so.
Why move that we accept those bids?
A was the first one. There was no, there was only one bid, right?
B.
B.
B, I'm sorry.
B was aggregate, right?
Yep.
Why don't we just, why don't we make a motion to accept the bid, Division, the bids for Division Two, cause those...
Yeah.
So, these were all the lowest bidders that you took?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And PJ Keating got all the rest, cause no one else bid on anything. The screen gravel, the screen gravel at the plant, um, base gravel, if you go down the whole thing. The bank runners, the only thing they didn't bid on. Um, the screen sand, they got, um, all the way down through to the crushed dome. They basically got everything on Division Four.
Oh, Division.
Yeah.
So, Division Three we passed?
It's the end of the season.
I didn't have a Division Three.
Okay.
I had Division Four.
It might've, like, yeah.
Pox and landscape material.
Two, four, and five.
Two, four. Yeah, two, four, and five. Yeah, we mustn't have got any bids on that, but Division Three.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it's the kinda wrong time of the year, anyway.
What's that?
It's kinda the wrong time of the year.
Absolutely, absolutely. I was basically doing this, so we can get our asphalt in place for Malden Street. That was my biggest thing.
So, we do a, uh, motion, second. They would have a discussion.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations for Division Four.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, these are just, like you say, we're not gonna use much of this stuff now, so...
No, I bid out what I thought we used, just to make sure. This, this is what we're supposed to do. Like I said, I didn't have anything to go by, so I tried to bid out as much. And this was actually an exercise for us, too, for Kerry and I to put together a bid package, so that we had all the stuff.
Is it surprising that you didn't get other companies bidding?
Not at this time of the year. Everybody else does this in June. No, I wasn't surprised at all. I was happy that we got our asphalt bid.
So, we'll redo it in June?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why we got this, we put this thing together, so that now, come June, we just change a couple of things, and we're ready to go.
You gotta remember, a lot of this stuff in the past was from Baltimore, right?
Correct.
But they're gone, so, that's why we...
Just a little closer, too.
...in Lunenburg now. Big difference.
Is that the closest place, Mike? With the guy in Lunenburg, or...
No, PJ Keating's closer, but, uh, I mean, um, Perkins is closer, but they didn't bid, so...
And they don't have some of this stuff either.
Right, right, so...
Okay.
Like I said, I'm sure we'll get much, you know, better things in June, when everybody else wants to, when everybody else does it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And number five, Division Five?
Yep, five, and it's all, basically, I catch basin frames and grates, and manhole frames and grates, and HR Prescott got it. They were the only ones that bid in, and I'm glad they did, because they're right around the corner, so at one time, we had another company.
They shut it every time, you gotta drive to the other one.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the good thing is, when we drive out there, we get ten tons at a time, and hopefully that'll last us the whole winter for the coal patch. So, that was the only good thing. It would be a problem if we didn't have that, uh, new hot box. It could be a serious issue, cause we do spend a lot of time driving back and forth, and we have to put, you know, forty, fifty tons of the stuff in the road over the course of the winter. But hopefully, that'll be cut down to almost nothing, you know.
How about, I'm sorry, how about town electrician, town plumber, those?
No one bid on it.
No one bid on either of those?
No. That's why I'm gonna make some changes on some of these things, um, to hopefully entice somebody, because it was awful helpful to be able to have those people on call, you know, for doing stuff, cause they always came up and did work up here in the past. You know, we've had Dennis done it before, and other people have done it before. We had a guy from Sterling, but that's why this spring, we really have to put something together. And I've already talked to a few of the electricians and a few of the plumbers, and tried to get them on board, so the next year, when the stuff goes out, we can get some people to put in bids for this stuff. Cause it just makes it easy, when you can just go to a sheet, and it's all done the right way, and makes everything simple.
So, the only four are the four A, B, C, and D?
Yeah, right, right. Yeah.
So, move Division Five, A, B, C, and D.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consider voting to approve additional snow pile hirings?
Yeah, these are just our people. Let's see what we got here.
We got, uh...
Daniel Ryder?
Yeah, he's actually the fractional pox laborer.
Daniel Ryder for the seasonal position of...
Right.
You know, we could do the, uh, hirings, different one, same one?
Do you have the names?
Are we ready on those?
What's that?
Are we ready on those additional drivers, Mike? You voted two at your last meeting, Mr. Ryder.
The two, yeah, then, and obviously, if there's none here, then we have. We put that in there, just in case a couple, I think a couple haven't got their physicals.
Is it a placeholder?
Yeah, there's a couple of people that haven't finished their physicals and stuff like that, so...
All right, so move on to consider voting to approve the hiring of Daniel Ryder for the seasonal position of pox laborer effective October twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at the rate of eleven seventy-nine per hour.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, I just have one question. Status of Malden. You kept saying, you know, where, can you just give us a quick update, and when we're gonna start seeing some?
Um, what we've done so far is, we completed another section of our drainage. Um, the engineers should be getting back to me, either tomorrow, the next day. Um, they've, uh, got most of all the engineering done, and I'm hoping by the next time it comes to this meeting, we'll be going out to bid. That's how far along they are, so, um...
Out to bid, as in, we might have a chance of...
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for. We're really, everything's pushing for that, yeah.
We're still on that line, okay.
Right, we're still, and that's why that, that I did these bids, too, so that we could have someone, if we're just gonna overlay the upper part of Malden Street, we have someone that can just, we pay by the ton to have it overlaid, so...
So, the hope is for what, you're saying?
Pray for this year. We're trying for this year, you know what I mean? At least for the, at least for the loop, you know, the loop of Crescent involving the worst part. You know, that's what we're really shooting for. And again, like I said the last time, they're gonna, you know, grind it down about, you know, eleven or twelve inches, and pack it down, and base coat and top coat, and we got a couple of the drainage improvements that had to be done on the lower part of Malden Street done, and we got one more right by the intersection there we gotta take care of, that didn't get taken care of last year. And so, we'll be ahead of them as far as what we have to do, so then it'll just be up to them to do their thing.
So, will anything be done, do you think, this year between Goodell and Crescent, that part of Malden?
That's, that's our first priority. That's first priority.
All right, when you said that island turnaround, I was like, hey, that's farther down than I thought. Okay.
Yeah, no, we just have to do that, because we're trying to keep ahead of them. I don't want it to be us that holds them up.
Right.
So, that these little drainage projects, that we would have to do, all this other stuff, we have all the stuff at the shop to do, so it really didn't cost us anything, so we're trying to nibble away at all those. And I think we got one more, like I said, left. Now, we might have to raise a frame or something like that afterwards, but it's all, we won't get in their way at all. So, as soon as they're ready to pull the trigger, we're ready to go, so...
And then up near Pinecroft, you were waiting to...
I got the poll out. That came out that next day that I met with you, and, um, I talked to the chief today about it a little bit, but, um, as Mr. McCormick said, I guess we're just gonna be trying that little bit. I just wanna make sure that there's nothing else we have to do. I haven't found much paperwork, when I've been looking up this project, to try to see if anybody's gone through, if I gotta find out about flows of the street, if we have too much traffic coming down, and if I have to get any type of permitting for that. So, that's the only thing I haven't seen yet. I haven't seen any paperwork. I've been digging and digging, but I haven't found anything, so I'm trying to put some feels out, to just make sure we do it the right way.
Right.
I mean, I understand, we're gonna just give it a test, you know, the test run, and that was a thought. We're just gonna, we marked it out the other day. We went up there to cut that corner out, and just throw some asphalt in there, and see what happens. So, I mean, that's, that's how I feel, too. If we can just give it a try, and put up some plastic barricades, and some signs, and talk to Holden, I mean...
Yeah, because, as I recall, Mr. Chairman, if I recall how it went, is that there's gonna be like a public meeting, more for the Holden people, so that they would know, as you come down through, that that road's gonna now be, you're gonna turn.
Right.
Or flying down straight, that there's gonna be barriers.
Yeah.
But obviously, some big signage that would say the same thing, traffic changes.
Right.
Would probably do the same thing, cause to hold a public meeting with people, it'll be next January before you, you know, get it all that settled.
Right.
You just gotta go to Holden, select me, and all that.
Yeah, I was hoping a couple of advertisements in the paper or something would help us out, yeah.
And then just, that was all it was gonna be, was, and then those little plastic barriers to stop with.
Right, right.
In case somebody hit it, it wasn't gonna destroy their car, or hurt anybody, hopefully.
Right.
And then, just make that corner a little bit bigger for trucks, I guess.
Right.
But that was the whole conversation, the whole thing.
Mr. Chairman, may I, um, before you wrap up with Mike, I'm looping back to Malden Street. Uh, I think Monday night is a Conservation Commission, uh, meeting night. Permitting is in that, um, uh, isn't that, uh, Malden Street, um, a project scheduled, uh, to do. Mike and Nancy, um, met with the Concom back several weeks ago. They're in a ready mode, but, you know, just a reminder, you know, next Monday, if any permits or, um, or blessings or something are needed from Conservation, you know, before that goes out to bid, or as that goes out to bid, you know, that's a key night, Monday. I think we know someone that's on the Concom.
Somebody, we don't know. All right. Thank you very much, Mike.
Is there anybody on that port that could...
Somebody. Not too well, though.
Thank you.
All right. Um, considers going to assign interim memorandum of agreement between the Town of West Boylston International Associations of Firefighters Local 5054, AFL-CIO.
So, move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, consider request for a donation receptacle permit and a transi- transient vendor's license for CEM RK Incorporated for a bin located at Our Lady of Good Council Church.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consider request for donation receptacle permit and a transient vendor's license for Recycle That LLC for a bin located at Duncan Gilly's Company Incorporated.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The answer, and this, they're all...
The gentleman is here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You shouldn't say anything.
You shouldn't say anything. You're, you're all set.
Yeah, you get out while the getting's good.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to just sneak right out of here. I just wanted to say...
Good. You're gonna learn the difference.
Exactly. Well, I like to make my presence known as well. Um, my name's Matt Libby. I'm with Recycle That. We have the container down there at, uh, at Duncan Gillies, uh, very successful. Glad to help divert tons of material out of the waste stream here in West Boylston and throughout Massachusetts. So, we try to keep our container, uh, in good working order. Spoke with Duncan today. Uh, we have a back-and-forth relationship, which is great. Communication for cleaning up the container, that's one of our top priorities, keeping the area neat and clean.
So, if he, if he comes by on the way to work one day, and there's all kinds of stuff aside of it, he just called you guys and...
Calls my cell phone directly.
And you guys send the truck out to the guy.
Is that a problem with, and your other, other town, so you got people throwing trash and stuff next to it?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, it's a continual problem everywhere, and, uh, you just try to stay on top of it, uh, because if, even if the container's not full, if somebody puts something outside of it, the next person's gonna put something outside of it. And, uh, so you have to, you have to get on top of that, so, uh, that's, that's what we do.
How often do you come by and empty them?
Uh, for, for that location, it's about every three weeks. It's all books that we get in there. But, uh, but there are seasonal, seasonality times. Uh, this past winter, hardly went there at all. Uh, it was just too much snow, and so forth, and people weren't contributing. Uh, springtime, and this time of year, we're there more often, uh, just because more cleanouts. So, uh, and if they're, and Duncan has been on the phone with me, because someone left a large donation outside, we're there within twenty-four hours to take care of that. That's, that's our obligation.
Is this one just books?
It, it, it's just books, yep.
It's one at Walmart, I guess, that says just books?
No, 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 just, uh, we just have the one, uh, here in town, so...
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Is, um, they all expire, when the, all licenses expire?
Yes.
So, if these people, uh, they haven't come in...
So, if we have any problem, that's your opportunity, to look at the license, and you don't have to grant it, if you didn't wanna grant it. Um, I, the one bin that was a constant problem was the one at Zito's.
Yeah.
And that has been removed. Um, we're still working on the others. I touched base with that gentleman Kerry, who was here on the Surfside Pool. He's been in contact with them, relocating the box, cause he wanted to move it a little bit further back, and he's, um, he's still working on getting signatures for the, the other two bins that he has.
Have they resolved the problem with, uh, Walmart?
Walmart, have we got anybody that's come forward along?
Um, I've sent reminder emails out again.
Yeah, cause that, that was still this weekend, I believe, there's both, all three bins, and then both sides, but there's four bins here.
There's four, plus the one over there.
There's five, four, yeah.
It's, it's...
Four together, yeah.
It's actually two separate owners, so it's really two lots. I didn't realize that, but I was told, and I found through the assessors, that it's two se- separate owners.
The books are by the mains, and then this...
Correct.
Conversation, I just spoke at the Mass GDP about regulations just like this.
Well, what we wanted to is that, some, you know, if they didn't know, well, they put on someone's property, they weren't even aware of it was on their property.
Yeah, yeah, that happens. That happens, and that, that's a real problem, too. So, uh, one of the reasons that we, that I endorse having these sorts of regulations, so there is some markings on it, there is some communication, there is some accountability, uh, for it, whether it's that one container at, at Walmart, uh, that could directly affect other containers throughout the city for them. Uh, so if I had multiple containers, and one was a problem, you could, you could hold my other, uh, permits at bay as well, so, uh, I fully endorse that, uh, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, I just asked, another town, do you go, do they have some type of regulation that...
There, there aren't too many. There's a lot of people talking about it. I live in North Rennett, uh, and I actually took your form and gave it to my, uh, my recycling committee, which is, which I'm on, uh, because everyone's trying to draft something, because, because it becomes a problem, uh, and just like the incident we said.
That means you check the works, too.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, one of the, uh, yeah, because there are, we call them guerrilla drops, uh, and I've had it happen to me. Every one of my accounts, I have paperwork, signed paperwork by the owner or the manager of that property, and, uh, I put one down the next day, two others from one of my competitors, it's right there, they know any idea.
Right.
So, uh, so this sort of thing, uh, really helps, helps that. It gives me, cause I couldn't couldn't call them, hey, can you contain her, and they'd hang up on me, but, uh, but the property owner called them and he, he said the right words to get them out, so, so this is a good thing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, accept the surrender of license, licullations issued in Central Margaret, Seventy-Sixth Central Street.
So moved.
Second.
Was that the beer and wine?
Yes.
It is.
And, and they, were you invited?
No, uh, so right now, our status on quota for beer and wine package, we have five available and we issue zero, so that up does that come?
Or new guy hasn't made it on yet?
No, he has not, although I have been receiving, um, some phone calls about, um, new restaurants coming into town and asking if we have full restaurant licenses, so that's a good sign.
But this one here is just selling beer and wine?
Yes.
How many full restaurant licenses do we have?
We have, we are allowed fourteen and we issue seven.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Consider going to, uh, put the hand on Christopher Pearson to the, uh, fire proposition of dispatcher effective October fourth to Delta Fifteenth at the rate of sixteen seventy per hour.
So moved.
Seven.
All in favor? Intrum Town Administrator's report.
Just two items, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, we have some, uh, information from the Mass Municipal Consulting Group, uh, that you requested at your, uh, at your last meeting, um, I hope that's, uh, amplification enough, uh, for us to, uh, to proceed with this study.
Did they already get a chance to look at that, sent an email as well?
I sent it out electronically last weekend, it's in there, uh, it's before you know.
I know we're getting questions about that, but, uh, any other questions?
This is how, excuse me, this is how the contract will, what I guess, I don't know, only we have a, a little contract that says, you know, contract the services and the list of this and da-da-da-da, and then the woman's like, will sign it, um.
The, um.
I mean, I don't.
But the contract was lacking in detail and we all.
Yeah, I don't care if John just signs it, I don't have a problem with that, um, 'cause then if something goes wrong, he pays the nine grand.
There you go.
That seems fair.
Yeah, it seems fair, huh?
It's, it's fair, I don't know either.
So is this actually, what they're calling is the contract, the email that was sent with numbers?
That's the addendum to the.
To the original.
That's an addendum to the contract, that's why both documents are there.
All right, okay.
I would call it exhibit A.
One through six.
Has the town council looked at it?
No.
Again, I mean, this just spells out one through seven and then one through six.
Something of, something of this magnitude and, and I think simplicity and, uh, you know, the outcome of the, of the thing is a study at all.
I mean, before, I don't count.
Yeah.
The only question I have is when we would expect the work to be completed, and there might be a date here, but I'm not picking up on it.
They did say, uh, they did say the, uh, at the last meeting, uh, no, later than December fifteen, they think it, you know, it'd probably be closer to the beginning of December, but, you know, they just gave themselves some, I don't know, so mid-December.
Wouldn't that be the one issue of having the contract?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't that be something, it's time to have in the contract, when, when they figure it?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, what if, what if we're still here in April and they still come back and we don't just say?
Well, well, they wanna get paid, not gonna get paid until it's done.
Again, I, I think it is a very, they, they specify more, but it's still very vague. And I, I know it's only nine thousand dollars, but I think the nine thousand dollars is a lot of money, so, um.
No, I, I think nine thousand dollars one way also, but I think they, they have specified what they're gonna do and, when they're gonna do it, I mean, I don't know what else they can.
It doesn't say when they're gonna do it anywhere in the contract.
But this, you can't, they're gonna conduct a study, they don't know what they don't know yet, so you can't put a date certain, time, or any work, we're gonna be done with it for this, they could start and.
Every other small contract or anything, we always have a staff, you know?
Yeah, we always have a date when it's kinda.
I thought there's some date, I mean, the number of it. What if they get a bigger job and they say, you know, I don't, we don't need to get paid with it for us to.
I'm comfortable if you're telling us December fifteenth.
I'm, I'm very comfortable and understanding, you know, that that deadline, when you look at that scope and the number of interviews that they have to conduct, that means scheduling interviews around people's, uh, schedules, some of whom are town volunteers, and, um, you know, that's, you know, that's a difficult thing, um, Mr. Chairman, I think there's, you know, and I hope you agree, I think there's sufficient detail for us to get started.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the email addendum, uh, listing materials to review, interviewing contacts and consulting with you.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Just wanna say, uh, I, all you said is, um, I didn't, I said, I was not in favor of having a nine thousand dollar contract with that five, um.
Right.
Counsel, I didn't say, I didn't think it was a lot of money, so I just wanna make sure that that's out there.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, um, in, a question was asked of me at the, um, uh, at the last meeting about the stormwater project where the utilities can be put, uh, you know, what are presently overhead utilities can be put, uh, placed underground, I can only tell you that the project manager, apparently, at DOT is, uh, is part-time, I have left a voice message, her name is, I can't pronounce the first name, uh, Riordan, uh, P E, and I, you know, left a very specific message about, um, if the project's scope, you know, presently or could accommodate, you know, the installation of overhead, uh.
I'm sure I like the power, would be willing to do this, it's trying, uh, the cable and the, uh, rise and whoever runs it.
What are, what are you talking about? Yeah, can you just tell us? We don't.
At the last, uh, at the last meeting, I had two requests, one was Mr. Crowley's, uh, on the, um, on the safety issue, which, uh, which you covered, uh, and the other was, um, could I find out from DOT, uh, if we could place, you know, some of our presently overhead utilities, uh, underground, if, if DOT could incorporate that into their.
Sideboard project.
The sideboard project. The sideboard, right, right.
And they did a closet project, yeah.
He didn't, okay, and we asked them if they could put the, put the Y's in the.
I, I made, you know, I made contact with DOT via voicemail, I won't hear back from them until next week.
Okay.
The one returns to work on Tuesday, I guess.
Can we reach out to Representative O'Day, he was at that meeting, I was at.
Yeah, I know the transfer.
Okay, he got, he gets some contact people, I think he's been in contact with them, so maybe if we can ask Representative O'Day if he called, he's been speaking to him.
I just think it makes sense because they're gonna put the, uh, they're gonna replace the water mains, if we can do, whatever else we can do, or the roads dug up, I'm about saying to do it.
Yeah.
All right?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, meetings, invitations and announcements, announced the town has received a MIA, uh, loss control grant to the amount of five thousand dollars, which would be used to purchase two backup cameras for the ambulance, announced the town has rewarded a substantial material recovery program grant in the amount of four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
And I, I don't wanna do it with you, this.
There's something.
Material recovery program, is that recycling?
Yes, I'm assuming.
Yes, okay, never mind, I take my question back, if I just read what I should read, and so.
All right, uh, selectmen's reports. Mr. Ruchel? Any report?
I don't have any reports, I'd just like to thank the towns, towns residents for coming to town meeting, um, voting on our two articles, the two important articles, I guess we had, I think they were all important, but the ones that everybody stayed for, and thank the residents for coming to all the informational meetings, you know, it was, uh, a good turnout and the people have spoken, so the election will be the November seventeenth, and the one, um, item that will be on will be the police station, the dead exclusion for the police station. That's all, thank you.
I have nothing.
Sure. Um, I also wanna thank the people, but I also wanna state that I was disappointed that the senior center did not pass to be able to get on the ballot, um, speaking to the people on aging, uh, council on aging, they were really looking forward to having a, a new place to offer different programs, so I will say that I was disappointed that it was not able to pass.
McCormick?
Is this reports or future agenda?
Reports.
The reports, I, I don't have a report, I didn't do anything exciting.
All right, now we're going to future agenda, Mr. McCormick.
All right, there we go, thank you. Um, I'd like to have on maybe the next agenda or soon, sooner than later, um, the planning board here to answer the question as to why our request that was sent to them for a public hearing on the signed by law was never heard, and therefore the, the bylaw was never placed under town warrant for this past meeting, 'cause it couldn't be.
Hmm.
I mean, uh, are they that busy that they can't, um, take our requests, um, or is it this, that they didn't wanna change the bylaw? Uh, number, that's, so that's number one, um, I think in the future agenda meeting, we need to talk about the town, the new town administrator's search committee, uh, what we're gonna do with that, and, you know, I've, I talked to, uh, one of the members that was on the last one, Jim Ryan, did a, the selectmen's meeting, and he's not able to serve again, I just asked him if he would be available, I, I obviously promised him anything, but he said, no, I don't have the time, and I don't know if any of the other people would, or maybe.
And I talked to another one.
We feel we want another group of people to do it, I don't.
I talked to another one, they said the same thing.
So, um, we need to do something with that whole scenario, so that maybe needs to be discussed, I don't know when the things come in and when it all.
November fifteenth is in, last day.
Can I just, can I just ask, Mr. McCormick, maybe without putting on a future, can we just post that we're looking for people for the search committee? So we won't wait till the.
Well, yeah, I guess.
'Cause we are, we know we're gonna have another.
We're gonna have to have some sort of search committee, yeah, I, well, however you wanna do it, I don't, I just think we need to discuss it, and if we're gonna take the same approach as we took last time, we need to, so take.
Okay, I have no problem.
Do something.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that at least one and John said he has a, another one, so we know that two out of the five are gone already, so.
Right.
Um, we need to maybe talk to the other ones, maybe John can, um, let Nancy know who that one was, and so, and if we feel comfortable with the other three, I mean, I thought the committee was really well made up, I have no issues with that, um, but maybe we ask them if they're willing to come back, the three that are left, if they are, then we're looking for two more people.
Oh, we, we post it, and if those people wanna come back, they just tell Nancy they wanna come back.
Come back and, yeah.
Then we can decide, yeah?
Yeah.
But I, but I have no problem if we wanna talk about the process differently at the next meeting.
Well, I, I.
I don't know if that's what you're.
I just think we need to do something pretty soon, because we need to be ready to go the day that those final resumes get here, 'cause we've already been months without a town administrator, you know, we have Jim.
We got, we got Jim.
But I mean.
We feel good, don't we?
What were those reports every week?
All right, a permanent.
Correct.
Even though that does save town administration, uh, all right, I'm, I can get in enough trouble, um, and I just have one last issue, if I could, this really isn't a future agenda item, maybe this should've been under my selectmen's reports, but.
So you could've had your thing.
Yeah, I could've, well, I'm taking it now, if you don't, if you'll let me. At the meeting the other night, um, we, there was an accusation by a town resident that there might've been some sort of a dealing between, um, the board of selectmen, or certain members of the board of selectmen, and the person who, um, ultimately purchased some land up on Davidson Road in Woodland Heights, and I answered the question and I said that we voted and I voted to sell the land, or that the town sold the land, all right, number one, we didn't sell the land, I misspoke, I, I said it wrong, we didn't sell the land, we just, when it became a, we have a right of first refusal when it comes out of a, um.
Sixty-one A.
Uh, yeah, with a, the sixty-one A process, and then we, we, the board, uh, a number of us, a majority of us, voted to not exercise our right of first refusal, which meant we decided not to proceed from the town side to purchase this land, that it was available for anybody to purchase, um, which ultimately, I guess, did happen, but, um, I guess these people didn't really pay attention to everything that went on when we did this, we mean, took great deal of effort to protect the town and protect them, um, from anything being other than the six or seven, or seven or eight houses that were proposed for there, um, we spent a lot of time and effort getting that taken care of, um, so I just wanted to correct my misstatement that, like, the town sold the land, we had nothing to do with selling it, the town got no money for it, the town got nothing for it, it just was, um, we just didn't, we just decided not to buy it, is, or take that approach, um, and, and I just wanted to correct that, and, and again, as I said the other night, I seriously, um, am disappointed that even somebody would accuse us of taking some sort of, being in some sort of collusion with somebody who I don't even know who owns the land, um, the person, I can't remember their name, I remember him being here a couple times and that was it, so, um, I resent that, as being a town resident my whole life, that I would ever do that. That's it.
And it was, and, and the, the owner of that property was good enough to write that agreement with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
He did not have to do that.
He didn't have to do anything.
Yeah, he could've purchased it, it was, it is his land, but.
But he was, yeah, so I, I just wanted to correct what I said, I didn't want people to think that the town got money for that, 'cause we didn't sell it, we just didn't buy it, is what it amounted to, so.
Thank you, that was, I appreciate it.
I'm great.
Um, with Mr. McCormick bringing up, um, getting a permanent town administrator, I would like to discuss the process, if we have two openings, are we gonna use the same process, um, what Mr. Ruchel said, so I think we need to have that discussion, and as Mr. McCormick said, then get really ready to go, you know, and decide how many people and what the process we're gonna do, so I'd like to have a discussion about it.
Um, I received an email from a resident of Marsh Hawk Way, um, that there's drainage issues on Marsh Hawk Way that could potentially lead into a lot bigger problems, it'll end up looking like a Malden Street if we don't do something about it, I'll forward the email and, uh, it could be forwarded to the DPW director and, and basically, I don't know what needs to happen, I didn't read, I don't know what, in detail what the email says off the top of my head, but just, I'd like to add that to an upcoming.
Marsh Hawk Way.
That wouldn't be, would it be a high number on the left-hand side?
Please look at that problem.
Is that the driveway?
Seven thousand times.
DPW is looking at.
If it's the same one.
If it's the same one.
I, I.
But we'll look.
We'll look at it.
Okay. Yeah, if I, if we could just get an update on the regional dispatch withholding, just to see where that may.
That's a good point, yeah.
That's, that's probably me, Mr. McCormick's tenth year working on regional dispatch.
Oh, yeah, at least, at least.
And on that same subject, someone brought up at the town meeting about the line being brought up that way when they bring it, remember, there was a, the fiber optic?
Oh, yeah.
Is it going that way?
Could it go far enough to, uh?
Could it go far enough to, to the new police station?
I would say pretty quick we'll have a contractor on board or.
But I, but somebody answered that question and said that Dennis said that it was fine.
Okay, okay.
The town may have Dennis.
Oh, there's no way we can move into this building with a dispatch center, we need to have a regional dispatch center, this building's not gonna be designed at all.
Not big enough, no.
I guess that makes sense.
Yeah. But I don't know if they need that for other things, that's a good question, I don't know if they need that for anything else, but.
But, yeah, we guess, you could ask Dennis if that's cable can meet, yeah?
Did it?
We really know it.
Yes, sir, um, I have one thing, actually should've brought in the reports, uh, there is a.
Uh-huh, somebody else missed.
We passed that already.
A fifth, a fifth meeting next Wednesday night, there is an opening on the fifth committee, and I know all the people that have some ideas at the town meeting, if one of them or all of them would like to come and tell us their ideas, we'd be more than happy to hear them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, is a long time observer of, uh, of town meetings, I want to commend, you know, the board for all the work, all of Nancy's work, including, um, carrying a lot of fist water in terms of organizing meetings and things like that, in com, uh, you know, many people, you know all the play, you know, pitch in despite, you know, perhaps disappointment over some outcomes or some, uh, as some things that might've been said at, that might've been said at the town meeting, um, it was very well organized, you know, professionally run, I think you got something good here, you know, I just wanted to, again, as a long time observer and someone from the outside, I guess, uh, uh, out hooking in, it was a great job.
There's a lot of zippity-doo-dah. A lot of zippity-doo-dah in that meeting.
Want to, before we adjourn, Nancy, there's only one signature on these?
Yes.
Okay.
Kevin'll sign.
No, he's signing, he's got the money.
All right, motion.
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.